October thirteenth, the conclusion order. As the notice of this being as required by the open public reading act has been provided, a copy of the notice specified at date and time and location was one posted on the voting board outside Borough Ball, two mailed back through email to the current owners, and three given to the borough administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained with all honesty. Vote for this.
Brandon Abad?
Here.
Steve Juszczyk?
Here.
Lynn Sullivan?
Here.
Mary Cleveland?
Here.
Jane Kabuda?
Here.
Andrea Derrin?
Here.
Al Kreskes?
Here.
Jason Fresca?
Here.
Ogragin?
Here.
Chris Raddick?
Here.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up we have an insight plan for Somerville Town Center phase three. James Allen, I am Doug Wilson. So while we're here, we've been discussing the many obstacles that the pedestrian bridges I don't know if we have sets of plans to get out and take it. I'll just be back. For the record, that's the meeting, everybody. We'll be tonight is Lon Madigan, remember these people.
Are they stable?
And he will be presenting. They're like the actual influence. And we'll go through the engineering. Fire marshal, hard markers, and course rules. I ask for all of the review to the front, so it's still on the record. We're about to look at the coverage, and we'll take a look at the question. Fire pressure.
All right, great. So before we start the talk today, one application, no recording documentation, mark a day three notice publication, which is for jurisdiction act tonight. And then we'll start with SA three. Why don't we mark a day three, just so it's here for the record, the review letter of CHA dated October seven, 2021. And then put that as A four.
And I would just ask, can you confirm the survey? Noticees that were good for jurisdiction.
Uh, yes, totally. Notice, and I told them that there was any issue.
Thank you.
And did you find out what the issue is?
Easy coming.
He's probably seen it.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Somebody must have got it.
Before you folks get started, I just want to ask anybody to speak up thoroughly and in loud voice because we've been getting feedback from the live stream and from the public that sometimes it's difficult to hear. I was just so muffled by poor voice, so I can keep my voice up. Although, we work by public that all day to talk, only to pass out here and that. I don't want to do that. I don't get too many words in as well as all of this. I don't know. I have to say.
All right, so Doug, do we have anyone other than Ron tonight?
Um, only if you are engineering or planning question, you can put what you just want.
Okay.
So we have one procedure for your disposition. And we have sanitability in here. My plans here are just a bit.
I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know if you care about any of the, not gonna be able to hear it. If you face them the other way, so yeah.
I think you have the chief of home.
Stay closer to her, yes.
The critique follows us to the planner, and we have right out of the justice to be there.
All right, so why don't we spare Ron in and if we have anyone else who says something further than that. Ron, as far as how's it going to be this word of truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth?
I do.
All right, just by your last answer, I thought.
Sure, Ronald Pollenbeck, AUUL, DN VACH.
Mr. Chair? All right, Ron, you took together a presentation to the board, I'm sure it's our request to have these, well, pedestrian bridges connecting to various buildings, so. You can exhibit, and you go through that to the board, so we can see the exact real record.
Sure. Uh, just for clarification, uh, the exhibits I'm using tonight, uh, the first two civil plans are part of the package that was submitted. So I'm not sure if you want to mark those or.
If they're exactly the same as submitted, they'll be part of A one. Anything new or anything that's been changed or colorized or anything else, we'll mark as additional.
Okay, so I have three sets of exhibits. The first two are exact duplicates of what was submitted to the board. The third one is a newer rendering that we put together, uh, just for tonight's purposes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. As Doug indicated, we're here tonight to talk about two pedestrian bridges or two connections, uh, one being connecting building one to two. Uh, building two is the existing five-story building where Wolfgang and the existing tenants are, and building one is under construction, which is on the left side or the other side of South Davenport Street. Uh, we're here tonight to talk about posing a connection, an aerial bridge that will connect the second floor of both building two and one together, go across South Davenport Street, as well as a bridge connection that will take you from the existing deck that's recently built to building five, which is, as the board may recall, um, approved standalone building, uh, that sits kind of between the main building number one and the bank itself. So this would be a pedestrian connection there. Uh, on the first exhibit that you have before you is the overall site plan. It really just shows you a balloon blow-up of where the two bridges are. As I indicated, the first one is located, uh, across South Davenport Street, connecting building two to building one. And then the second one is obviously a much smaller bridge that connects, uh, the proposed building five, uh, with the existing parking deck that's out there today. The second plan as part of your civil package, um, is again just a blow-up of those balloon errors in our first page, again, just shows you the location where it sits back off of, um, West Main Street, again, the connection that goes across your building two to one, and then again, the smaller connection that goes to building five, uh, to the deck itself. Of course, from the site, site plan standpoint, um, pretty simple. The architectural package that you received as part of your package as well, when I handed out tonight, obviously you have the architectural renderings of the black and white renderings that show you what the bridge is, uh, gonna look like. The first, which is page A one oh one, is showing the connection from building one to building two. This would be the view if you're coming up South Davenport, according to Main Street, uh, building two being on the right-hand side. Uh, you can see, uh, there's arches on either side that would straddle the existing sidewalks, and then the connection itself, uh, with the bridge itself. Uh, if you look closely, it may be a little difficult down here, the plans you have in front of you, uh, there's a dash line that shows, uh, the ramp or the floor that goes in, because there's a difference in elevation between building one and building two. From the outside, obviously, you won't see that. Everything's internal. Uh, if you did make up the elevation change from a second floor of building one, uh, to the second floor, it's about three foot difference, so we're gonna make up that in a ramp, uh, which would be completely A D accessible, um, through the, the, the deck of the bridge itself. This is a collaboration of discussions that we had with, um, the, the Borough Committee as well as the Architectural Review Committee, going back and forth, those, um, materials, the style, the lighting, everything, uh, that you see before you tonight, so this is a work in progress, uh, for some time now.
Hey, Ron, um, I know you don't have a, actually writing from the Architectural Review Committee, but can you represent the board when we give you the plans?
Well, we met with them, oh boy, it's probably time ago.
Twenty years ago.
It's a long time ago, yeah.
But at any rate, the, uh, the planning board has tradition to maintain jurisdiction over the architecture of this site, anybody. Not giving good.
There is obviously a series of architectures, but if you skip to the last page, uh, the architectural set that I handed out, it showed.
Now, is this a new one?
No, this is part of the set that was submitted out, correct. It should have been. I don't have the original solution. Yeah, it's, it's my side.
Okay, that's fine. I don't think they're gonna make it no way. Well, this is, this is in the second.
Again, this is an architect's rendering of what you will see from, if you're standing on the corner of South Davenport and Main, uh, building, existing building two to my left-hand side, proposed building one on the right-hand side, uh, and the bridge connection as you look down, uh, South Davenport Street. The bottom connection is just a color rendering of what we saw on the first page, which is just two building connections, uh, over, uh, South Davenport Street, the bridge arches.
Chris, what's the, maybe the question is for about whether it's sprinklers or the windows that will be, just to find out?
Sure. If the program's chairman, there's a, a letter from CHA appropriate to go through now, you want to open the board to questions?
Yeah, why don't you go through the letter?
Okay. Um, again, the question to, uh, the review letter from the CHA dated October seven, 2021. It's appropriate, uh, the first set of paragraphs is for informational purposes, uh, really starts at the bottom of page one, uh, talking about outside agencies, uh, I'd like to address that, some say can't, can't the planning board, uh, we have received the pool from them, I will send copies, um, to the Borough. Fire Marshal, we just received a letter today.
I gave it to Karen.
Yep, I had it. So that's why we had us mark that as A four, the fire prevention bureau, on our date, October twelve, 2021.
I have October thirteen. Um, it was revised when it was done.
October twelve, yeah.
It was revised in sixteen.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's appropriate, I'll go through CHA's letter first and then go to the other. The Fire Marshal's right. Fire Marshal, we spoke about Architectural Review Board, uh, the chairman spoke about that, uh, NJ DOT letter, no interest. I apologize, there was a mistake in our application, we had put on our original application package, an NJ DOT permit, a letter of interest was pending, there is no NJ DOT permit required or a letter of no interest, um, so that's not required for this distribution, it's not within the DOT right away. Doug's error on our part.
Okay, so with any application to show that, and therefore that section one D doesn't apply?
The regional center notice in both bridge one and bridge two, we submitted, it's been difficult, and we don't get back from them, but we've submitted both those. And then the Borough Emergency Management, um, I have a, an email from the Emergency Management approving, um, the plans, A two or five, Mr. Chair.
So let's mark this then as A five, and what we have is a email, uh, from Steve Wyman, uh, municipal coordinator of OEM of Borough, uh, to Sean and Colin, indicating to review the plan, dated October fifth, as you said, 2021. Review the plan meets the current goal for self-sustainment in newly constructed multi-residential dwellings, the plan is approved.
Number two, the engineers asked me whether or not could be opera goings and sprinklers, uh, the, the windows will not be opera going, we will have sprinklers. There's a question came up from the engineer about the, um, about the volat calculations. Um, what I'd like to ask the board, Mr. Chairman, is, they're asking for a condition of the approval for the design calculation due to submitting. Because of the close proximity, these will be designed by the same structural, the structural engineers kind of designed the bridge, um, to see if the board will allow us to submit those at the same time, building permit with the bridge itself, as opposed to doing it in advance.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that was.
I'm sorry, that was number three.
Thank you.
The volat.
Uh, number four talks about the NJ DOT design manual. Uh, again, as indicated, this is not within the DOT right away, however, uh, DOT requires seventeen, you know, seventeen foot clearance with additional six feet for million overlay. We do have, we do have seventeen feet, six inches on the proposed plan for clearance, uh, over South Davenport. Uh, the other question came up in his letter is referencing a lesser clearance on the smaller bridge that connects building five with the parking deck. Um, there's no manicular access on there, we'll provide you some volat for safety so that nobody couldn't press curb for emergency, that nobody hang it under it, an emergency vehicle, uh, just about fourteen feet, emergency vehicle hanging under it needed, but there's really no need, because it just goes back to the alley that's, uh, between the parking deck, building five and building one. And again, it's not within the DOT jurisdiction, but was not required to meet the seventeen half feet over this area here. Um, the reason, number, I'm sorry, number five talks about the sidewalk. Again, when the redevelopment plan was written, I'm sure this bridge connection was not contemplated, the redevelopment plan requires ten-foot sidewalk for trees and landscaping. Um, we do not have that in the area of the, the bridge because of the columns. Uh, we do have, uh, nine point oh four feet on the left-hand side and eight point seven four feet on the right-hand side of clearance. Uh, the engineers asking that those dimensions be notated on, on the plan, uh, but that is a waiver from the redevelopment plan for the ten-foot clearance.
With, with, after with.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The next item, number eight, uh, number six rather, talks about lighting. Again, the lighting that we're proposing here, um, is decorative in nature, it's not intended to be as part of the overall lighting plan. There's lights on either side, um, that will be part of what was on the approved plan, so the lights, although they will throw off light in areas, there's lights underneath, uh, the arches, underneath the bridge itself, as well as the side lights up and down, they're decorative in nature, not intended to light the site, there's already lights out there, streetlights, um, that are, that light the site itself.
With that, the, the lighting will be blocked by the structure that, uh, existing lighting?
No, we'll put, there's lights on either side, so it'll throw light up either way.
So the, so the little passage lights will be pretty bright even?
Correct, they're, they're open, yeah, there, there's lights underneath, um, the bridge itself, shooting down, so very well lit, as well as wall lights, uh, on the inside itself.
How about the lights over the roadway, does it dimble to prevent any issues with drivers and windshield come over there at night?
They are, we don't think it'll be an issue because they're straight down, over the, there's an issue, we can adjust them.
So do we need any relief from that, from, uh, any of the lighting requirements with regard to height or illumination?
I don't believe so. Number seven, uh, talks about the traffic signal visibility, um, Karen, this is where they do exhibit, so it's going to be flat.
All right, but let's mark this as A six, when I can tell this exactly what that is, this is the copy. Then I want to see, do one of my cameras out, okay?
We have it.
You got it, that's right.
So mark this as A six. Can you just give us the title of that for the record?
Yeah. That's it, just the title, Somerville Town Center, it's a, it's a street view taken from Google. There are two pages here, um, they're virtually the same drawing, you can clip them quick, they look like they're the same exact drawing. One is actually zoomed in a little closer to the bridge itself, but they're the same exact, uh, view, which is, you can see with more clarity.
All right, so this is a Google street view of around Lang, you know?
Uh, just taking, the image was created today.
At your office?
Yes, at U B Design Services. So the building on the right-hand side was a building number two, with an actual, from the street view, uh, the building on the left-hand side is the architectural rendering proposed with the bridge connection shown on there. Uh, based on the seventeen six, uh, clearance that we have here, if you look closely, you can actually see the green light underneath the, the bridge, as well as the light station on West Main Street. And on the second drawing, Karen, which is the same exact drawing, just zoomed in a little bit more.
All right, let's mark that as A seven, so we'll say it's the same as A six, when I, uh, more internal.
And that, you can see clear, a little clearer, as you can see the light as you come around the corner, around the curve of South Davenport Street, you can see the light in its entirety, so it'll be plenty of visibility as you come up, uh, South Davenport Street, north Main Street, you can go see a traffic signal. When you're asking about, number eight, he asks about easement across, uh, South Davenport Street. As the board may be aware, South Davenport Street is still a private road, it's still owned and maintained by us, it hasn't been turned over to the town. So there will be easement created from, from us to us for now, that will eventually, when the, right wing is turned over to the town, will be easement in place. Uh, again, the engineers asking for a condition of approval. Uh, we don't have an issue with that, with the exception of typically, we'd like to defer that until after the bridge is actually built, uh, or do it as an as-built, because sometimes things could change in the field, if I create an easement now and the bridge ends up shifting five feet in either direction, I gotta submit a corrective D and go through the whole thing, so I have no issue with the condition of approval, that it be submitted, uh, upon completion or part of an as-built, um, of the bridge itself, so we don't have to do the, do it twice in the event that there's structural issues, like you.
Makes sense.
And just, yeah.
Will you submit that to Karen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that in, so you don't make a lot of damage, it'll get a little bit less depend upon how it ultimately works out, and then we'll report it.
I agree. Uh, number nine, talks about the roof drainage that comes down over the sidewalk, um, we cleared the engineer, we will pipe them directly into the storm sewer to avoid any icing issues. And then the last comment, um, number ten deals with S I H, and the engineer is, uh, simply pointing out that there's a sign, obviously, it says Somerville Town Center, located, uh, on the, the bridge itself on both sides. The question is, that's part of the redevelopment plan, whether or not we need the waiver from the redevelopment plan, because it's not forced, civic retailer, it's just a, a directional sign, if you will. Um, the sign ordinance does allow, if it was a typical precise sign, a sign of one hundred fifty square feet, uh, the plan shows it, um, it just shows a rectangle around the, the sign, it shows that forty-nine square feet.
The actual, if you remeasured it based on curb, it's always a.
Thirty-three point two square feet is the actual sign area, it's a foot and a half by thirty-two and a half feet long. Again, it's just a decorative sign, it's a directional way, way finding, if you will, people that are coming down, they don't, they're inside.
All right, so just to clarify, we do need a variance for the number of signs, uh, but not a variance for the sign area?
Yeah, one thing I was unclear of is whether it was a waiver or variance.
Well, I think the sign ordinance requires that we, there is supposed to a waiver.
Because it's not a business. Correct?
I wonder how it's applied, and you take a look at that question?
The letter, in, in, Chris's letter talks about that.
Yeah, talks about this.
That each business has implemented a wall sign, and so you get early, there's no actual business, this is just a pedestrian bridge. To that point, it probably means a variance, that it's not for a business. Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether the ordinance.
Well, you can have, you can have your. You have a monument sign on that corner. Um, I think this is more preferable. Wayfinding sign is allowed in the redevelopment plan at the corner of South Davenport and Main Street.
Okay, we can't go that far.
No, no, it's not, it's not a pylon sign, the pylon sign is separate again. Should we swear at the hall? Yeah, or swear again.
Oh, you mean additional, you mean additional monument.
There has been a monument sign, I believe, approved. There are additional wayfinding signs allowed in the redevelopment plan, and I would put forward that this is an additional wayfinding. And we would have this. Which means it conforms. That would be. Should, should it be like?
Yeah, I'd like this for everybody. All right, um, Colin, you're the. Well, let's, let's, Colin, let's, let me swear, so the individual that was just testifying previously, Colin, why don't we swear you, A Christine, in both of your names?
Sure.
Just for the testimony, you're about to be this word of truth, nothing but truth.
Yeah.
Can I, I still don't have their name.
Colin Driver.
I just put a person in C L I N?
You got it.
And the last name?
Mike Bus, yeah, Driver.
Thank you. And your name?
Mine's Christine with a C H R I S T I M E, and her phone is C O F D N Frank O N E.
Just to clarify the record, to Drive, you made some comments about the signs, now that you're in the road, that your testimony be identical.
Yes, it would be.
Sorry.
Hold that aside. Did you want to wait for special one before you go, Christine on the side, or do you want to guess that way now?
Let's build it right now.
Okay.
Do you have an opinion as to whether or not, either a waiver or a variance would be for that sign?
I do have an opinion, I'm reading from the.
All right, why don't we, why don't we give who you are, who your application is, right? I know everybody knows you listen to.
That's my fault.
For record, I'm Christine Capone, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been qualified in Somerville and an access of four hundred and twenty or so other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, I'm an affordable housing special master in about thirty different places, I teach planning and zoning courses for the rubbers, for government services, and my license is served currently in Dallas.
Do we ask you to accept the, the.
Thank you. So I was reviewing and preparing for coming here, I was reviewing the master plan, or the reexamination, or the redevelopment plan that governs this property, and one of the things that I read in there was that additional wayfinding signs may be permitted at the intersection of Main Street and Davenport Street extension upon submission and approval by this board, by the planning board. So I thought, well, when you're looking at what was being attempted at, and what was the reason for the redevelopment plan looking to accomplish there, the fact that this is not associated with any particular business, I think renders it exactly the type of additional wayfinding signage that the re, uh, the redevelopment plan was calling for in this area. So my opinion is that I don't think that there is a variance required for this, I think that the redevelopment plan specifically contemplated additional wayfinding signage, and I think because it identified the Somerville Town Center globally as an overall development, you could look at that as wayfinding signage as opposed to signage that was constructed in one particular building that was used. So I think we are completely consistent with what the redevelopment plan calls for, and I think the size is certainly appropriate at forty-nine square feet, or about a third of what would be allowed to, um, in accordance with the plan standards, so.
Actually, third, three.
So, three two point two. So I think we're certainly consistent with that, I see no, um, no reason why the board wouldn't allow for this to fall under the additional wayfinding signage that the plan gives you the authority, gives specifically this authority to.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my testimony for the CHA, but I'm not sure if the engineer has any questions.
I have one question, going back to item one four, about the height of the bridge over the roadway. I, I read that it says about seventeen, but you get to do this once. Would it be better to raise it to like eighteen or something, just so that you never have to think about it, do it again? But the, the fire department clearly for their vehicles.
Yeah.
And I just don't know if there's gonna be any other kind of large vehicle that may have to come down there.
And we can take a look at that, and then again, the seventeen six is off to the side, so it's probably a little over eighteen feet in center, but certainly.
Well, I was looking at a drawing, it seemed like seventeen six at, at the top of it. I was wondering whether or not that's gonna be enough.
There's no obstruction coming from veterans, though, either.
Veterans Memorial, correct? There's nothing proposed in the future going up there, so.
Not yet.
That's true. Oh, it, it's, it's developed.
There's an elevation difference between one building to the other, and if this bridge were higher, would that help resolve that problem a bit more, or exacerbate it?
Exacerbate, because we're trying to keep up with building, building one, which has a lower elevation, the way the shift is, so would that would be start eating into our floor area, we're trying to make up the ramp, as you try to ramp up to the higher elevation in building two, the existing building. So we can take a look at that and see if we can shoot, because I, I only want to build it once, too.
Yeah, typical utility vehicle, the largest P S E G trucks, how, you know, or the traffic trailer.
About eighteen feet, obviously more than enough for those.
I just think, well, you, you're okay, then, okay.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that and see if we can pump it up a little bit. We're, we're comfortable where it's at, knowing that just one's not gonna get hit.
Just to confirm, too, there's no public access, this is all just residential going across it?
That's correct. Well, for this one.
The other one.
Yeah, and the other one's.
Parking deck may be different.
Are you gonna go over the parking deck, please?
Yeah, uh, it would be kind of, it would be a letter, basically, for most part, addressed this bridge, because I was scared of the size, but we can certainly talk about, um, the smaller bridge that goes through, of, uh. the smaller bridge opposed to building five. That bridge detail is shown on A106 of your handout, and was part of your original plan submitted. Again, this is obviously a much shorter bridge, 30 feet in length, has the same materials where it's got open air across the top, it's got the fire and cement boards with decorative lights on the side of itself. You know, it's cross section elevation for both sides. So this one's a little bit different, because it is open air, it doesn't have closed windows like we have over South Davenport Street. This is strictly, really just a covered bridge, if you will, more so than what we have on South Davenport Street. So there's a awning that covers the walkway itself, you can get it from the parking deck, two building five, and open air.
Just to clarify, building five was the gym?
Correct. So this will take you to the second floor of that building itself, which the first floor was a retail, and the gym started on the second floor. And this gets you across.
Coming directly into the parking ground, too.
Correct. This gets you across that road or alley that the public entrance to the gym, so you come in here and make a left, you get into the deck, this pedestrian bridge is ready for you there. Any other questions?
Chairman, just want to.
Go on to.
Fire? No, it's the fire's letter.
Oh, wait, I didn't see that one.
This is someone, we already, we already marked it, it's an October 13th letter, that we marked as A4, and I hope that we testified to the client.
Carol, is the date on that letter?
October 13th.
Basically, I don't know if anybody's seen the former letter, it was a memo or a letter issued on the 12th. He just changed where he put the word shall, because his authority changed it from shout to strongly recommend, some of these things. But again, as indicated earlier, we're going to comply with all four of his comments. We're providing sprinklers, fire extinguishers, everything that's in his letter will be complied with.
Okay. That's what I like to hear. So if the board has no other questions, I'll open it up to the public.
Can I just say, I'll put a question? Just going back to this waifinding sign, I have no issue with everything everyone's done, I just kind of want to make sure we're doing the right relief. Waifinding sign defined in the redevelopment plan, I'm just looking for it, it is defined, and it's defined as?
Waifinding, identifying.
That's, that's the only, okay.
And I'm related with the.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure, because I don't think that there would be an issue if there was an additional request that we'd ask the board for them, I just want to make sure it fell within the definition and the ability of the board to make that.
Any other questions?
Absolutely not.
Okay, anybody from the public have any questions? Here none, you will close the public portion. Basically, Ron, you're complying with everything that's in both reports, right?
Correct, just a couple of minor stipulations with whether the condition of approval or something like on building permit, or deed at the end of ASBIL, but yes.
I agree with that, I have no issue with it with the timing, changes, I've noted it. I happen to think it's gorgeous.
Yeah, it's pretty, right?
I like keeping people off the street.
Not always distinctive and identifies the site, but it's practical. That's going to be a very busy corner, while the site is fully built, it's busy now, and we're only halfway done. Once all the buildings are completed, and the site is, you know, working at full activity, there's lots of people, and we can raise them up. It'll put this project on, further on that.
All right, so the motion, we have a motion, and we have second, who made that, who made that first motion?
Please.
Jason. I said, Jason made the motion, subdivision motion. Okay, so just to go through the really, that's requested, we have amended preliminary and final, major subdivisions, place of approval. What we also need is a deviation from the minimum sidewalk width requirements, 10 feet is required, and the testimony was at 8.74?
Seven-four?
Seven-four?
And nine.
And nine, eight was required, uh, what's that called, sorry? There was no relief from our building plan, and the, yeah, I'm going to get that, I'm just getting it, I'm just getting the relief right now. So there is no relief required for the wall sign, as we are indicating that it's a waifinding sign, and there is no waiver required from the sides either, because it is 33.2, as opposed to 49, which is a reasonable. So the conditions will be that they're complied with everything that's in the fire letter, as well as CHA's letter, with the exception of item three of CHA's letter, which talks about the design calculations being a condition of approval. The applicant is represented, they will submit those calculations at the time of building permit, as well as item eight of that letter, which indicates that an easement will be a condition of approval. The easement will be a condition of approval, that will need to be submitted to the board attorney and engineer for review and approval, but that will be at the time of, after ASBIL, after the construction's been completed, on the ASBIL, so they're done. The letter, I think that was it. Yep, I think I'm good. Okay, so now, vote. Jason and Deidre, you're okay with the condition of the test?
Absolutely, yep.
Bernie of Autumn?
Yes.
You can tense the act. Then Solomon?
Yes.
Eric Finland?
Yes.
Andrew Adair?
Al Krestis?
Yes.
Jason Prescott?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Is there any? Set the board, you set the board. Stay under a good side, Ron.
I'm not allowed to.
I'm going to kill you.
I've got to say one more.
You don't want our meeting squared?
Next up, we have the courtesy to move you for storage permit, so.
Colin? Colin, please, are you staying for this?
Yeah.
Can you grab my easel on the side?
Sure.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Stetson, it says D-A-N-I-L, that's an S and a C, H-I-T-T-O-N-E. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, currently I'm representing a PHD architects, personal signature, and we're speaking to the board.
Okay, so just reference, as everyone knows, has anyone had any questions with regard to the board's jurisdiction with regard to review of this application, review making recommendations? There was a application that was submitted, we'll mark that as A1, there was no notice required for the application, and organs where you went?
PHD.
Okay, I'll just, sorry, you mind?
Okay.
Sorry, testimony, you're about to give scores, we'll do the whole thing in that book.
I do.
Okay, I'm wanting to give the board your qualifications, and then you can just indicate your, your second.
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, currently I'm a member of the American State of Architects, lead accredited professional, I maintain memberships in the National Council of Architectural Registration Board, and the construction specifications.
Thank you.
With me is, well, I guess we should be sworn in eventually, Edwards Engineering Group, Beth Kendredine, she art consultant in civil engineering on project. The project was submitted to the Department of Education, for school facilities, complying with state regulations as well, same time as submitting to the local planning board. The comments in the letter that we received on September 16th, we just wanted to address the few of the items.
Okay, why don't we mark that, so that letter we're referring to right now, we'll mark as A2. That's a letter from my call, dated September 16th, 2021.
Correct. Comment number one, stated that upon the review of your photographs, the 24 foot by 42.66 millimeter building, that is correct. It's located on the northeast side of the building, Vandereal Elementary, you can see there's a parking lot in this area here. Currently, there's two storages, like almost like conics containers here on grass. The intent is to build this building. The corner of the parking lot taking advantage of paving that's here on the lawn area, so minimal site impact, minimal paving impact, with the intent of omitting the two storage containers that are roughly, you know, supposed to be temporary storage for this facility. The building is a metal building, it is insulated, and the heights that are indicated on the letter of 16 feet to the median roof height for a daywork is correct, and roughly the area of the building is about 1,024 square. The other comment about the curb, number two, for pavements, you remove, and the six foot wide apron, the comments in that letter were correct, they were just stating what's going to be stored there. The racks that you see in the building, architectural plan here. They mentioned in the letter that's similar to like a Home Depot rack, that's correct. They'll be roughly about 10 feet to 14 feet to the east, so just for school facility storage, and they're indicated on the side. For comment number three. It was suggested be, because of stormwater management, that there'd be a drywall installed, and due to the impact of the site, recent rain events. What we're doing now is, we're currently engaging a bit of technical engineering for soils. So based on the soil conditions, we'll see if that drywall is needed, based on the firmability of the soil, and basing those test results, the district agreed to provide a drywall and, and that report.
Okay.
Lights indicated on the drawing, this, I guess, should be introduced as an exhibit, because this changed from the initial submission, just because we are showing, the initial submission had these drawings here, plan, front and side elevation, we're just showing the rear and the other elevation, they're just mirrored. There's five light fixtures on the exterior.
Okay, why don't we, so we'll mark this as a break, and why don't you give me the title of that page, and the original date and the revision date?
The revision date will be marked as of today. Title drawn, score planning elevations, and we sheet A101.
Great, thank you.
For this drawing you showed, there's exterior light fixtures, this picture here is for reference, it's actually an identical building that was completed last year in another school district, so we're using the same template, same design. The light fixtures are recommended at the doors to be five foot candles at the door level, we'll make sure that we specify a fixture of that, that. As far as testimony for the color regarding, so we have materials here, it's a metal building, as you can see, it's a FRP indoor insulated metal overhead door. The roof, the colors are indicated here, the district's acceptable with those colors, I know people who talk about school colors, we're open to changing the color if needed. It's a standing C metal roof, so the whole appearance from the outside will be valid. And as far as the same comment, number five, what will be stored in the building, it's going to be long lawn equipment, snow removal, a couple of machines for polishing floors in the district, so there may be anything that was in these adjacent storage containers that would be relocated to this unit. And it will be, it will have gas heat and electric wiring.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. The existing two containers, they're going to be removed, why aren't we removing them, put that back in the building rather than out in the parking lot? You know, these one, they could just simply just remove one of the storage units, put the building in, and then take the other one out? Because that's, that's going to be a structure in the parking lot, looking up towards the fields and stuff, oh, the field.
So we actually discussed it today, what's going to happen is that that area, and this is part of the building, I'll show you.
That's why the bench is two.
Correct, so this. This part of the building here is the gym, and the maintenance area with no windows, so right now there's no current view. The classroom wing has a view this way for windows, so we're getting rid of the views of the conics containers, and currently this way, there's no view from at least inside the building blocking. You are correct, and if you pull around the building, that door will be your storage, it'll look in front of the fields. The advantage is that we're taking advantage of pavement, allowing a truck that's the right size to come in and do a proper turn, without having to come in and locate on the grass, we don't want to affect the site drainage as well, so.
Thank you. One question, is there any student activity anywhere near here?
On the other side of the parking lot, there is a playground on this side, right in case, if you're here, that's current.
But the kids are supervised when they're out.
Correct, yeah, and.
I remember.
And the way the facilities are worked, then obviously no deliveries, and everything should be taken away, so students don't play.
And there's no impact to the current parking field, then?
Correct.
So that lower drawing shows two, what are those, two rectangles that are far, wait, to the right?
They're original, if we have to keep the storage containers there, but the idea is to omit them.
So building, can I get, like a fire alarm, since there'll be clean supplies inside of it, like, or is it just?
It's just electric and gas right now, it's not act, like.
So there's a fire that starts like on a weekend or something, there'll be no alarm going off, right?
I think we have to address that, then, I can see that. We'll have to address it, and then attach it to the fire alarm system, I can just take that into consideration.
It's all under the ground.
Correct.
Yes.
It was all underground, so.
Looks better than the two storage containers.
Okay, I think, unless the public has something to say. I think we probably could go. Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
What, do you need anything?
Yeah, just make a motion in seconds, and I'll look favorably upon the application and design, the proposal of the, of the school district, and that you have no further recommendations.
Chairman, I would like to make that motion, as a, as a vanity for a graduate.
I'll second it.
Well, Jason was a graduate, I was a, I graduated many times from there.
So you have the mayor's motion, Deidre the second, Bernie of Autumn?
Yes.
David Zinski?
Yes.
Adam Sullivan?
Yes.
Eric Finland?
Yes.
Andrew Adair?
Yes.
Al Krestis?
Yes.
Jason Prescott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about now, the chairman? Okay. At this point, I'll open it up to the public for comments. No comments from the public, we'll close the public portion. And I don't have any comments. Hold on, if you can, if you signify by saying aye. Hold on, hold it closed.
Thank you.